Good afternoon and welcome to the, whatever day this is, January 10th. Thank you, I guess it says it on this, Council Work Session. So we have a couple of items of business, one of which comes from a public forum on Monday night. So I'm going to do this in, just so everyone knows the order, we're going to talk about Councilor Cyret's motion, we'll talk about dusk to dawn, and then we will roll into our more robust discussion about parks and rec. So, take it away.
Thank you. So as I broadcast at our Monday night session, I have a motion related to the draft proposal that was presented to us at our public forum, and I have a motion related to that. So my motion, I move to direct staff to craft a proposed charter amendment for an independent performance auditor based on the objectives and provisions contained in the Citizens for Sensible Oversight January 8th memo presented to Mayor and Council in sufficient time to allow for a referral to the May 2018 special election ballot.
Do we have a second?
Second. And if I could just speak to that. So, some might be surprised to learn, I'm rather agnostic on the question of whether or not the city has an auditor function. I tend to agree somewhat with my colleague, Councilor Clark, on the question, but obviously our community is engaged in a robust public discussion about this, and we've got a proposal on the ballot that was crafted by members of the public who have presented a proposal that contains the provisions that they think are the best model for this community. And not surprisingly, we've had another group of citizens come forward and say, "We believe we actually have a model that might work better for our city," and I believe that there is room to debate and discuss this alternative provision, and that this council has some responsibility to provide a public forum for that discussion, and that is the purpose of my motion.
Thank you. And I have already, I have a mic in the queue, but I just want to say one thing, I think I've said this to all of you, but just to reiterate and for the audience, that we will just do one round, because this is just a simple vote, this is not the moment in which we are going to tease out different aspects of this, it is just a vote to proceed or not proceed. So everyone gets one round, and that will give us time to do the other things we need to do in our meeting. So I have Mike in the queue, anybody else? Take it away, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I will, as a big shock to everyone, I am sure, vote against the motion. My reasons for voting against the motion are that I don't believe the city needs an auditor of any type. I believe that the functions that give way to a lot of folks saying we should have one are properly council's functions. I believe there are an awful lot of people who are frustrated because they don't see behavior amongst all of us, me included, very frequently, that they wish they had, and so they believe that an auditor will be a solution for that. I don't think that's true, and I think there's, I think there's some danger playing with the form of government and altering it in an unhelpful and troubling way over time for us to have an auditor. I believe that putting the second measure on the ballot, while many would say splits the preference of those who would like an auditor, I don't politically believe that's true. I believe it much more likely that that will ensure that the original initiative that's currently on the ballot is more likely to pass. So I won't be in support of this process.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak to this? Betty?
Thank you. I think everybody wants to. I will vote against the motion, I think it is totally inappropriate, and we have never before come up with something after a, this doesn't happen that often actually, that a citizens group is able to get enough, but it's got signatures to get something on the ballot. I think they did when they decided that councils should be paid a long time ago. Citizens did that. And citizens were trying to do something to stop the destruction of Broadway, and council decided at that time to put it on the ballot, which saved them the trouble of continuing to collect signatures. But we didn't come up with another proposal. And I think that it's up to us now to wait and see how the vote goes. A lot of people worked for a long, long time, you couldn't go anywhere without seeing somebody collecting signatures. And miraculously, almost miraculously, they succeeded in getting enough signatures. Now I think it's time for us to debate that issue, if you're against it, vote against it, find out more about it, and if it fails, I'm one who thinks we do need an auditor, but if this fails, then it's time for the council to come up with, ask for help from the public and come up with another ballot measure. But this is not the time to do it, I think it's an insult to the people who've worked so hard and so long to get this ready to, and I disagree with Mike, I think it will probably cause both of them to fail if we put another issue on the ballot. But I think it's, I just think it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily?
Thank you. I don't think, and I'm not going to vote to put it on the ballot, although I do appreciate Councilor Cyret's response to the forum, I just don't think we have enough time. If we vote to look at it, we need to tear it apart, really go through it, because we would, at least a majority being endorsing it in a way, and we would all want to make sure that our information and thoughts on it were included before we would vote for it. My colleague, Councilor Pryor, has always cautioned me that our job is to be slow and deliberative, ask questions, and get public input, and we don't have the time for that. And I think the measure deserves that kind of time, and we just don't have it. We're talking about one month before it has to be totally done. We've got to get staff to write it, we have to review it, we have to have the public input. It's really, really quick, and we have not had the first group come and present to council. But we did have the second group. The first group started way back in spring. We just heard about this on Monday, our first meeting. There was plenty of time to bring up another way of looking at it, and there was plenty of time to ask council to work on it. But we didn't get this information until two days ago. That's not a lot of time to digest it. So I think it would be a bad precedent to have a group come at the end with a proposal to go on the ballot, and I really want a lot of citizen involvement, but is that how we want it? To have people come to forum and say, "I want a work session on this now." It has to be now. How do we be slow and deliberative and conscientious to our constituents if we just follow this ask today? There's not enough time. Don't vote to put it on the ballot. Don't vote to look at it. We have so many things that aren't on the agenda we've been waiting for, that affect so many parts of our town and all of our people. We need to do our job and look at those things. We can come back to this. If it passes and we don't like it, we can do housekeeping. Who's going to vote against spending less money on a job? Let's go forward the way we decided in December.
Thank you. Councilor Ye.
So I guess I have some process questions, how this is going to work. So we're going to have the city attorney use the new proposal as a basis to write a new measure, potential measure. So if we have concerns about this, should we, since we don't want to discuss it all today, should we send those to you? I guess my question is based on the fact that if this came back exactly how it was, I'm not sure I'd vote for it. So if I have some concerns, should I send them to you? Is that kind of how we're working this?
If the motion passes, and there, what you say is true, our job will then be to take this, to take the objectives of this and the provisions in it, and then craft something that will not look exactly like what you have there. If there are particular components that you say, "Boy, this is, this part of it is really confusing, clarity would be helpful," that would be something that would be helpful to me in bringing something back to you. On the other hand, if there are some things in there that you just don't like as a matter of policy, it won't be helpful to me to have that, because I won't use it, because the motion is to take the objectives and the provisions in there and provide something back to the council. So the time for you to do that is when I would bring back the draft proposal, see whether it still causes a problem for you, and if it does, then you have that conversation with your colleagues around the table.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay, Alan.
Yeah, I'm interested in talking more about an alternative proposal, and I think this is the way to do that, to start that process. This is about more conversation, starting the discussion, it's a starting point, it's not about putting it on the ballot. And to me, there are some troubling parts that I've described in other meetings to this initiative that need to be discussed, and it's not as if we just started working on this. We've been working on this for months and months. The mayor's committee started when?
July.
July. So it's months and months and months that this has been going on, and so it's not as if we're just hearing about this on Monday. Again, this is a starting point for discussion, we can hear, we can talk about each of the points, discuss it, change it, modify it, and if we like that, then we can send that on to the voters. And actually, I don't think most of this actually needs to be in a charter amendment. I think a lot of, there's only a couple of parts of it that actually would need to be in a charter amendment that requires the charter change. Rest of it can be done almost administratively, and that could be put into place at any time. So I think what we'll see back is something that will be very limited in terms of what needs to be in the charter, is what I'm hoping anyway, and then the rest of it will be something that would be much more administrative, that the council would do as a matter of either ordinance or just policy.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. Yeah, this is one of those ones that has pros and cons on both sides in terms of what to do. And I absolutely agree, we need to be very cautious and thoughtful and deliberate as we move along. Another element is when the public comes to us and asks us to consider something, what's our obligation? Is our obligation to say, "Thanks, but no thanks," or, "Yeah, we'll talk about it," or "we'll consider it." I think it's important to note that this is not a decision to put something on the ballot, because I don't know if we can put something together in time to put it on the ballot. I don't know, I said that at the last meeting. But I think to be deliberate means you talk about things, and so at this point, I don't know if it's possible to craft something and get it together and have it ready for filing in February, which is moving very fast. But I think a conversation about what's been proposed to us, to look at the merits of it and say, "Are there some ideas in here? Are there some things we could do? Is there some mechanism here?" I've never been afraid of talking about something. And so in this case, I'm willing to support the motion because it allows us to talk about a new idea, but I am in no way committing to saying, "I think that idea needs to go on the ballot," or that this particular idea needs to go on the ballot. I'm absolutely supportive of an auditing function, a performance auditing function. I think it's a good idea. I've seen it done before, when I was on the school board, we did it. But I don't know what scale it needs to be, or what it needs to look like, or how it needs to work. In this proposal, we can talk about it as a way to kind of get some ideas around that. But I don't know if this is the right idea to put on a ballot, or to compete with, or whatever. So from a talking standpoint, I'm willing to support it, because I think deliberating is always good. But I want to be cautious. I think caution is something where you take the time to talk about it, consider all the opportunities, and then make a decision at that point.
Excellent. I'm just going to take a minute myself to just reiterate that our goal is to create the best public policy we can, and I think that's based in conversation and deliberation. The timeline was really established by this initiative appearing when it did, qualifying for the ballot when it did, and making it clear. My study group worked through this process, reviewed the possibilities, presented those to you in a thoughtful and neutral way, and this is, I think that this particular conversation is incredibly valuable. This is a major public policy decision, and it's important that it happen around this table and with due consideration. Whether or not you submit, ultimately submit an alternative ballot, the conversation is hugely important, it's a big public policy decision. So I appreciate your thoughtfulness on this, I appreciate really on Monday night the amount of community engagement that this has inspired, because I think it's very important that we have this conversation on a broadway with multiple opinions coming to the table. So that said, are we ready for a vote? All in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four. Opposed? One, two, three. So it passes, thank you very much. Thank you. And now we have a motion, another follow-up piece of business on the dusk to dawn, which we deferred till today. Is there a need for further discussion on the, you want to read the, it's right here.
Thank you. I move to approve 4060 West Amazon Drive as a site for the dusk to dawn overnight sleeping program.
Isn't it already on the table? No? Okay, a second.
A quorum.
Any discussion about this motion, follow-up from?
I just want to say one.
Go ahead, Betty.
I want to say, I asked to have the vote postponed, because I thought people were coming to the public forum to talk about it, no one came, and I haven't heard anything else, and so I'm willing to go ahead with the vote.
Terrific. I think it was a good plan to postpone, I'm glad you suggested it. All right, all in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and it passes. Thank you very much. We are clear, so we are now ready for, are we waiting for the manager to? He's on his way. We were faster than anyone expected.
So we'll be right back after these commercial messages.
Anybody know any good jokes?
Not a good one. I got all day, brother, I got a whole list for you.
All right, Mayor, it's your turn to fan.
Sing a little song?
That's really, I know.
Political two-step, maybe? Oh, wait a minute, that's Alan.
Yeah.
I didn't like it. It was fucking.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. And now that you're here, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just turn it over to the team.
Well done.
Well done.
Remember this for his evaluation, how well he is.
Well, thank you, and good afternoon, councilors. My name is Craig Carnegie, I'm the Parks and Open Space Division Manager, and I'm here with Carolyn Burke and Craig Smith to talk with you today about funding options for both the maintenance and capital improvements of Parks and Recreation facilities. I'm going to start with a brief overview of where we've been and where we are now with regards to the needs of our Parks and Recreation facilities, and then hand it off to our planning manager, Carolyn Burke. But before I do, I just want to give kudos to our planning team for the Parks and Recreation System Plan and all the residents that participated in that plan. I can't say enough about the amazing job they have done with this plan in terms of both community engagement and establishing a solid vision rooted in our community's values of equity, caring for what we have, creating more connections, and building stronger partnerships. We heard directly from over 13,000 residents using creative outreach methods that reached people where they were, rather than asking them to come to us, and this outreach work received several national and state awards, including one from Harvard's Kennedy School of Government for Innovation, and most recently from the state of Oregon for engagement with the local Latino community. You'll be hearing more about the Parks and Recreation System Plan in months to come as we move to adopt the plan, and I'm sure you'll also hear more about awards to follow. As for today's discussion about the funding needs of our Parks and Recreation facilities, one of the things we learned over the last two and a half years listening to residents, that was no surprise, was that Euginians absolutely love their parks, trails, pools, and community centers. They consider these places an essential part of what creates the high quality of life found here in Eugene. And the mission of your Parks and Recreation divisions is to help protect and maintain that quality of life by ensuring all people, regardless of age, income, or ability, have access to great parks, recreational programs, and facilities. As you already know, over the last 10 years, our budgets have been either flat or seen reduced funding for maintenance, while at the same time, much more parkland has been added to the system through the '98 and '06 bonds, adding to the maintenance gap. Also, many of our Parks and Recreation facilities are long past their life expectancy with infrastructure that is in decline and need of improvement. Over the same time period, we've seen a huge increase in illicit activities throughout the system, including spikes in property and violent crimes, pollution to our waterways, and damage to natural areas from illegal camping, and antisocial behaviors in many of our parks that deter other members of the community from even visiting these places. And despite these challenges, our staff continue to successfully achieve our mission with positive impacts that make people's lives better each day. We've achieved this by working harder and smarter, creating programs like Park Watch and the Park Ambassadors, utilizing mobile technology, increasing volunteers, leveraging existing dollars with grants and donations, and building stronger community partnerships. We also work together each day to help our community solve some of its biggest challenges, challenges such as addressing the homeless crisis, preparing for climate change, and protecting clean air and water. But our maintenance gap grows, and our capital assets, including basic park infrastructure like playgrounds, lighting, irrigation, as well as our pools and community center buildings, continue to decline. Yes, we've made some capital improvements over the years with strategic incremental investments, but the kind of investment needed now to keep up with growth and demand goes way beyond an incremental approach. Eugene is expected to keep growing to the foreseeable future, and our Parks and Recreation capital assets need to keep pace if we're going to ensure a high quality of life for our residents. We already have a backlog of new parks that need to be built in underserved areas of the city and other areas that have no pools or community centers. Eugene residents understand this dilemma. Multiple community surveys show that residents want us to at least do more to maintain the capital assets we have now, and many said that they want to see new capital improvements made. And the latest survey showed they're willing to pay for these things. So this brings us back to today's question, and everyone's favorite topic, pie, and how we all can have a piece. Or another way to put it, pie is a 30-year vision for a thriving Parks and Recreation system, and the question is how best to start funding this vision. There are lots of different ways to slice this question, and we've explored multiple funding options with you over the years that could provide council a path for the community to have their pie. And now Carolyn Burke is going to walk us through some of the specifics of funding options that have been honed down to a few scenarios that seem to be the most realistic to consider implementing at this point in time.
Virtual pie. Thank you, Craig. So yes, we're back to pie. And as you recall, last year, we brought this imagery to you to represent the community's long-term vision for Parks and Recreation in Eugene. This vision translates into about 250 individual projects representing about a $350 million investment in the community. Today's question is how much of this pie do we slice off? And what do we want to do in the near term? This is the long-term vision. What do we do in the near term? So last year, we also presented some scenarios. We presented these four scenarios for the community and council to ponder. Each scenario had a specific project list and costs associated with it. The first one, represented by the pie server, really was mostly about O&M funding that would allow us to take care of our existing assets and implement a small portion of the community's vision. The other three scenarios, represented by the different size slices, represent different projects and varying cost amounts that would get us to different percentages of the overall community vision, 13, 22, or 40 percent. So we spent a lot of time talking to the community about those, and then we did some polling, and this information was brought to you just at your last work session. We did this in October, and the results were as follows: 79 percent approval rating of the job and services that Parks and Recreation currently provides, a 74 percent willingness to support maintenance and security funding, 64 percent willingness to support additional capital investment, a majority of support willing to pay up to 10 percent, sorry, $10 a month for Parks and Recreation services in principle. And the reason we say in principle is because it depends on the details of what we're talking about. And that we also asked what the community's priorities were in this poll, and we learned that they are maintaining existing parks, protecting wildlife habitat, cleaning up illicit encampments, improved safety and security, and improved parks, trails, community centers, and pools throughout the entire community. So with that, I'd like to get into a few details about the operations and maintenance funding portion of this, and then I'll get into the capital funding portion. So regarding O&M, you'll recall that we had a subcommittee of the city council looking into this question in depth over the summer, and this is the shortlist of funding mechanisms that we talked about, and each one of these really, we talked about in great detail, and I have no doubt that we could continue to talk about each one of these in great detail. However, as Craig mentioned, the need for O&M funding to provide, to increase safety and maintenance in our parks is very real, and it's immediate, and there are only two mechanisms on this list that are viable in the short term. One is the marijuana tax, which we know has limited resources, or revenue, and there are other services that are also targeted for funding. So that brings us to a five-year local option levy. And I'll And I'll talk more about that in a moment. The other thing we talked about is what exactly makes up the need. And so this list was also reviewed by the subcommittee. And as you can see, it kind of has different category of safety and security, illicit activity response, general park maintenance, habitat and natural area improvements, as well as future park maintenance. We have a variety of strategies that we have identified that will, that we would like to employ if we have the additional funding. And the bottom line is, with this funding, what the result would be are safer parks, restored parks, cleaner parks, healthier parks. And in those parts of the community where we are underserved, more parks. So that is the O&M summary. Now let's talk a little bit about capital improvements. We have drafted a project list based on some of those earlier scenarios that we presented to the community. And these project lists are for a couple of scenarios, including a $31 million bond measure and a $42 million bond measure. The categories of projects that would be included in a potential bond would include park renovations, trail and habitat projects, safety improvements, repairing restrooms and irrigation, matching funds for school districts partnerships, matching funds for community centers, pools, and fields, and new park development. We have also identified where we can leverage funding through system development charges and partnerships to make those bond dollars go even further. Just a note about the projects that are on the list. We did a rather extensive process where we identified criteria to help us prioritize. That criteria included a triple bottom line evaluation. We looked at the four principles which have guided us throughout this entire project that Craig mentioned earlier. We looked at all of our community engagement work. We looked at our polling data, and we looked at urgency. So we believe this is a pretty well-vetted list. And I do have copies of it that we will share at the end of the presentation. So this is kind of what the scenarios boiled down to. There are three. One would be a O&M levy only. And that would have about $11.5 million in capital funding, representing about 4% of the community's vision. The next would be a $53 million capital funding package. $31 million of that would be in a bond. So the remaining dollars are through leveraged funding of SDCs and partnership funds. That gets us to about 16% of the community vision. And the final scenario is a $70 million capital package, which would include a $42 million bond scenario, representing 20% of the community's vision. So now let's talk a little bit about our options and considerations. First, there are some kind of general considerations we'd like to discuss. The first is this notion of a private foundation endowment. This is a concept that we talked about a lot within the subcommittee meeting. And I think everyone was in agreement that it is a good solution moving forward, that it is probably a long-term solution because it will take time to get the initial seed money together and for that to start generating revenue. And there are also questions about exactly how much revenue it will create, but that everybody thinks it's a good idea, and we should work towards it. So this first consideration is about identifying funding for a development coordinator and working with our partners, such as the Eugene Parks Foundation, to establish a private foundation endowment. The second consideration up here is around creating a citizen advisory board to oversee and report back on implementation of any potential funding measure. This has been, become standard operating procedure at the city, and I would say that we would welcome that kind of oversight and transparency in any measure going forward. And the third option up here is about continuing our efforts to find a sustainable O&M funding source. A levy is a five-year stopgap measure, which will help us for this period of time. But ideally, we will be able to move beyond a five-year funding solution and find something more long-term. And there are options that we can continue to work on for that long term, such as a sugary beverage tax was one concept, as well as a park and recreation fee. So some more specific options for your consideration are to refer to Eugene voters a $2.4 million O&M levy on the May 2018 ballot to maintain parks, trails, natural areas, rivers, and recreation facilities, including increased security patrols. So this is the O&M levy only. Or to refer two measures to Eugene voters on the May 2018 ballot, the first being a O&M levy, and the second being a bond measure in the amount of $31 to $42 million to improve parks, trails, natural areas, community centers, and pools. A couple details and considerations regarding that. If council does decide to move forward with a capital bond measure, we will need to adjust the O&M funding amount accordingly. And so that would go from $2.4 million to either $3.2 or $3.4 million because we would be building some new projects which would require additional O&M funds. And the final consideration is to take steps to ensure that if a capital bond was successful, that it would only take effect if the accompanying levy was also successful. We don't want to dig ourselves into a deeper hole where we have more assets to maintain without the funding to maintain them. So what's it cost? This is an estimate of how the three different scenarios would break down, with an O&M levy costing the average homeowner about $3 per month. The second scenario being the $31 million bond and the accompanying O&M costing a total of $8 per month. And the final $42 million bond scenario and accompanying O&M levy at $9.50 per month. Couple of details around this information is that the levy dollar amounts that you see in that top row represent the maximum levy amount that taxpayers would see on their bill. But these expenses would actually be phased in over time because we won't be able to construct everything right off the bat and therefore need to be maintaining it. It will be phased in as new projects are constructed. So that represents the maximum levy amount. And the other consideration is that on the 2018 and 2019 tax bills that homeowners get, they will see a total reduction of about $30 per month because the 1998 Parks and Recreation Bond Measure will be fully retired at that time. So that will come off their tax bill for a total of about $30 a month, which breaks down to about $2... I'm sorry, $30 a year. Sorry. I had everyone's attention. That actually is about $2.50 a month that would offset those dollar amounts that you see on the screen.
Less than a slice of pie?
Yes. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Craig Smith to talk about next steps.
The fun part. So after several years of us giving you all kinds of information on the Parks and Recreation Systems Plan, we are now coming to the point where we need direction from you. We do have another work session on the schedule for the 24th, and at that time, we will be asking for action to be taken on the Parks and Recreation Systems Plan. And we do have a deadline. If there were to be a referral for a funding measure to the ballot for the 2018 election, I think you already know that we need to make that decision by February 12th. But before we get on to any more discussion about during this work session, I'd just like to add a little more historic content to our discussion. There we go. So this is the National Gold Medal Award for Parks and Recreation. And we have one of those. It hangs on the wall outside my office. And so each day when I come to work, I get to be reminded about what an excellent Parks and Recreation System that we do have here in Eugene. I get to be reminded about a Parks and Recreation System that has historically been appreciated, valued, and supported by our community. And I also get to think about that we've always been responsible for doing the most of whatever resources we've been given. So it's great to have that there. I do have one problem with that award, though. You might know what it is. And that it was issued in 1969. So with that, we do want to thank you so much over the years for really listening and discussing the Parks and Recreation System Plan. And we definitely look forward to the next action steps we need to be taking to get this done. Thank you.
So I do have a project list to hand out, but before I do, I wanted to entertain questions and have discussion about the presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. This is so clear and so helpful. So I just want to thank you for the materials and for the whole series of presentations you've given to us. I have Mike in the queue. Anybody else? Betty? Chris? Claire? Alan? Okay, that just about covers almost... Okay, Mike, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. When I read recently about the new Parks SDC rates... And forgive me, because I don't remember if it was Parks SDCs or whether it was Transportation SDCs that I saw jumping from about $2 grand for a new home to near $5, or $2,400 to about $5. Was that Parks, or was that Transportation?
I believe that would be Transportation. We're still working on the Parks and Recreation methodology.
But it's probably a grand or two a house at this point when we're talking about an increase. An SDC is sufficient to do some of the stuff in...
I don't know. We haven't gotten to that part of the methodology yet. So I can't say.
The challenge I have with a lot of this is this. We've got a library levy out there. We're going to have a public safety discussion about how many millions we're in need of, either by levy or other means, in order to make public safety done properly. School district's going to put out one. We already know that. There are so many other asks for different departments above and beyond where we are budgetarily. I think there's a threshold here, even though I know I saw the survey work. I have questions about that. We could do that another day. But I think there's a threshold here that concerns me about what we both could and should do. I was very happy to see the endowment fund piece there. I've advocated that for a long time. I think it's very smart. But remind me, the undeveloped property that is currently in city ownership above Laurelwood is 43 acres? Do I have that right?
I think it's 42 acres.
Okay, more or less. Okay. So at 7% annual return, in order to produce $3 million a year, and you have here on the first two levy asks between $2.4 and $3.2 to $3.4 million for O&M. In order to produce that $3 million O&M money annually from an endowment, you would need a 7% return, which granted is generous, but let's just do some numbers. You would need a $42 million endowment in order to produce $3 million at 7% annually. Right? Interest-wise? I mean, everybody do the math there?
I'm not a foundation person. What my understanding is a general rule of thumb is they would distribute 4%. So I don't know if that matches the 7% number there, so.
So I was actually having coffee this morning with some folks who build houses. And they were talking about the new houses they're building in the River Road and Santa Clara area, where they paid $115,000 for less than a quarter acre of dirt. I've also been educated recently about the $175,000 per quarter acre of dirt in the South Hills. And I heard of one for $200 grand just for a quarter acre of plain dirt because we have so little of it here. And we have a housing crisis. And we're doing things that are making housing more expensive when we build it by the continual costs we're adding in this way. Here's my point. At $115,000 of dirt, per quarter acre of dirt, we're looking at roughly $19 million that can be produced at the sale of that property above Laurelwood at $175. That's about $30 million. So we're nearly half or better the way through funding and endowment with the sale of that one property that can produce nearly enough to provide our O&M. I think we need a much more robust conversation about whether or not we own more property than we should or whether we should be selling it for homes to make them less affordable and for us to properly fund that endowment that can produce the O&M money we need. I think that's the conversation we should be having right now about parks funding. Thank you.
Betty?
Well, thank you, Mike, for telling me, helping me. The first thing I want to say, we should not sell any land. We cannot make more land. And it's really good that we have bought all, purchased all the land we have. But my question is, did, why did you discard, did you discard the idea of a transient room tax?
I don't believe that is discarded, but it was not thought of as a short-term viable project. I believe that there are a number of different uses of that funding right now and considerations before we would raise that.
I also think the revenue potential there was quite small and wasn't going to meet the total need that we have.
I think it's an excellent way to raise money. And I think we could raise the transient room tax. But rather than, I don't, rather than using it to advertise our city, we could use it for things to make the city better. Anybody who stayed in a hotel at the coast or anywhere else, you know there are several taxes added. And it's, one reason it is such a good tax is that it helps, it enables people or requires people who use our parks, who don't live here, to help pay for them. And they are certainly used by people who are not taxpayers in the city. And it wouldn't prevent people from staying in the hotels. If you want to go to a place, you go there regardless of the tax. You know there are going to be taxes added. And I just think it's an excellent way to raise some money to, without hurting local taxpayers. And with, it's actually fair that people who use, who don't live here, who use the parks should help pay for them. So I hope we will consider that. Fee, I'm absolutely opposed to. I would fight against that to the best of my ability. I think it's really wrong that we have to pay to go to Mount Piscata now. I've seen people out there who, with children, who say, "Could I use your pass if you're through with it?" "My pass is in my car, so I don't have one to give them." But there are people who, even though it's a small fee, people who can, are prevented from using parks because of a fee. And that is the very bottom, as far as I'm concerned. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. It was actually very interesting to serve on the committee with some of my colleagues here. And we did do a lot of talk about different options. And I think it's important to think, to remember that what we're being presented today is what could happen over the short term. We're talking very short term, like two or three years. And so while I'm very supportive of options such as the endowment, I think the endowment is a tremendous idea. But the endowment is a longer-term strategy. And I think we should get right on creating an endowment. So I support the notion of having somebody who can help with that. But I'm not as optimistic, say, as Mike might be. I don't think 7% return is something you can have over the long term. Just pick the number. I'll pick four. Or that we could get that property sold in a short amount of time. So we might need a levy in order to have, you know, there's going to be a lot of conversation about selling any piece of land in this city and whether or not we should do it, even if we get to being able to sell it. That is not a short-term strategy. So while I'm fully supportive of an endowment and we should definitely pursue talking about it, and I'm certainly, you know, happy to talk about surplus property at Laurelwood, I don't see that as a short-term strategy. So even if you needed a levy for four or five years, while you had other mechanisms in place, that might be the strategy we have to pursue. But I am also very mindful of the whole threshold, threshold notion. If the school district puts at a minimum $200 million on a bond measure, and could be as much as $400 million on a bond measure, that is definitely going to affect people's thinking about what they can and cannot do. I don't know what other jurisdictions might be considering putting money ballots on the measure. LCC is talking about it, but I don't know what year they might go. The courthouse might be there. And so it's not that ours doesn't have merit, it's what is the overall environment going to be. So as we learned with the road bond, if we do want to go with something, it needs to be at the modest level. And so when we look at the pie slices, just by virtue of practicality, we'll probably have to go with something pretty modest if we do go. I think voters are able to say, "Oh, I don't have to vote for it all. I don't have to vote for any." But they will definitely consider the merits of each option, and I know education is a pretty strong draw for people. But parks is also a strong draw, as your own research has shown. So I think the proposals you're making, keeping in mind these are short-term proposals, are probably ones we should have more conversation about. I definitely think we should, we should look at that, but we got to understand what the environment is that we're going to be up against and what are the longer-term options that could dovetail into it. I think people need to know that we also have a long game in mind, so they can consider the merits of the short game.
Thank you. Claire?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation and all the incredible hard work you and your team have done on this. First, I just want to say I'm very excited about the new parkland we purchased in Santa Clara along the river. That is very exciting and a great outcome for that piece of property for the city. So I did have a question about one of the slides, the one where you juxtaposed the potential funding scenarios with 4%, 16%, and 20%. On the last one, the 70 million capital funding, $42 million bond would allow us to achieve approximately 20% of the vision. That's including the leveraged funds?
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah, and then you mentioned the project list, and I have a lot of faith in the list that you've created because of the work that you did in terms of outreach to the community and getting direct feedback. And so, you know, I think, just like the road bond, if we go out for these measures, if we have project lists attached that are pretty certain, as much certainty as we can give, I think that will be very, very important to the success of anything that we put out there. And I, I trust that it, that list reflects the desires and the needs that you heard from folks throughout the city. And we know that parks are a priority for our community, even when we struggle to find ways to fund them in a sustainable way. And I know that the community appreciates the work of Parks and Recreation to manage what we have with the limited resources we faced. But I actually feel that there might be energy out there for something more robust, on the more robust side of this leisure, rather than the more cautious side. And that's just a gut feeling. That's not an analytical analysis, though it is informed by the polling results. So I agree, we need to find long-term, sustainable funding, but I also think the community is tired of waiting for us to build new parks and to improve the ones we have, and based on the polling results appears ready to support some dedicated funding through the methods that we've discussed. And I'm ready to talk about what amount seems to be the right to reach our goals while being mindful of people's feeling burdened by potential new taxes. And I agree that some of the options we reviewed in the subcommittee, such as a transient room tax or even part of the marijuana tax, should remain part of the longer-term conversation for a sustainable way for our operations and maintenance funding. And then one quick question. I can't recall if the polling asked people about their support for measures if there were competing measures from other jurisdictions on the same ballot. It did not.
It did in the, in the push question portion of it, where it talked about the other needs and requests for funding, such as roads, such as schools. And, and so, you know, after asking that question, then they go back and they, they ask whether or not you would continue to support the Parks and Recreation funding, and the numbers didn't change.
Okay. I think that's very informative. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, thanks for this presentation. Continually disappointed we don't have pie, actual pie here, but just virtual pie. Lots of very impressive work has gone into this over the last 18 months, maybe longer.
Three years.
Okay. Just seems like 18 months. At least, I didn't say it seems like five. Lots, to get us to this point, it's been pretty extensive amount of public involvement and, and surveying and lots of work and thought going into development of this proposal. The survey that we did recently shows that councils go in the right direction, 62%. Pretty impressive result, especially considering where we are nationally, that the council's going in the right direction. And then almost 80% approve of the performance of the Park and Recs Department, which is astonishing. 11% approval, that's like an eight to one ratio of disapproval to approval of what the parks. So I agree with Claire that there's a lot of support out there. The bond measure polls pretty well, has support of greater than 60%, which I think is a good place to start. I do think the endowment and the foundation is a very good idea, and we should start doing that. I also agree that it's a long-term thing. It's not something that's going to help us in the next three years or five even. It's something that we need to put in place and, and work towards building that endowment up. I also think that if the Laurelwood property sale is a really bad idea, and it will cause this measure to fail if we add that to it, I agree with Betty that there's, we're not building any more land and we shouldn't sell our parklands. That would be a big mistake. If we did include that, I'd be put on, need to reconsider my support for something that included something like that. The, I would like you to compare the levy only versus the bond and the levy. So it's $3 versus $8 a month. So what do we get for our $5 a month extra?
I think once we hand out the project list, that will become more clear. But in, in a nutshell, with the levy only, we are being able to take better care of what we have currently, and we have identified SDC funding to build six new parks in underserved areas. So that would be what you would get with the levy only.
Parks that we already bought the land for.
We already own the land. They are undeveloped. Yep.
From our last park bond.
Right. So with the bond scenarios, they would also build those new parks and then a slew of other things, which would focus on renovation of existing facilities. So some of our parks are community centers and pools that are really in poor shape, we would be able to renovate those and improve those and therefore expand our service offerings through that. But again, I think once you see the project list, that will become more clear.
That's on the 24th?
Actually, I have it with me. I will hand it out in a little bit.
Okay. Maybe when we come back on the 24th, you can encapsulate that in a very succinct way, and so it could be really clear what you get for your five bucks more a month.
You bet.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. I apologize for being late. I was in a meeting with the 4J superintendent and went a little bit long. But I want to point out some things here that I think are important in a broader context. One is, is that about 10 years ago, I was serving on the Lane County Fair Board, and just looking at the facilities at that time, you know, I made the comment to some commissioners that we had dilapidated and antiquated facilities that needed to be either fixed, replaced, or repaired almost immediately. And I was told that, "No, no, no, Greg. No, don't, don't say, you know, dilapidated or antiquated. They're vintage." In a lot of contexts, within the context of the city, we have a lot of vintage facilities. Facilities were built either when I was in elementary school or before I was born. And I'm 57 years old, and I know that I'm suffering from dilapidation and deterioration myself.
You're a classic.
Yeah. So, so the point that I'm trying to make is this, is that we don't have the resources or the facilities or the structures within our park system to be able to attract the kind of external and internal revenue that we need to have. We've had this discussion on our subcommittee. There are other places within the state of Oregon that are, you know, bringing in revenue not only to the facilities themselves, but also tourism revenue and other revenue because we don't have the infrastructure that can support tournaments and other venues and other kinds of things that are critical to being able to support the amenities that we have locally. The other thing, too, is that, you know, I, I think that we really need to look at a sugary beverage tax as being a low-hanging fruit piece that we can, you know, support our ongoing operations. People have said to me, have said to us at this table over and over again about the issues that we have with safety in our parks and the inability that we have to bridge the gap between our ability to protect our citizens and provide the amenities, the basic amenities that they need, like open, clean bathrooms, knowing that you can go to the park and not be accosted and harassed. And the other fact of the matter, too, is that we have facilities that are in trouble. If Echo Hollow Pool, which right now infrastructure-ized as a D-rated pool, that in, within a few years or a few months, could collapse, and then we lose that facility. For how long a time? We don't know. And I'm out of time, but I'll take a second round possibly.
I didn't know whether you were out of time or the timer wasn't working. But you're out of time.
I'm out of time.
So Emily?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Looks like a lot of work. A question, if we went for a levy and a bond, would they be on the ballot as one thing or two things?
Two things, I believe. It would be your preference, but it would be your desires, but most likely the cleanest way would be two different items.
I think that would, would be a really good idea for one small reason. I'm more likely to say, "Oh, I could afford $3. Oh, I could afford $5, but I can't afford $8." So that might be helpful. I don't want to sell that land, but I also think that if we're going to do that, we, to do these, this levy and bond, we need to have designated some future strategies because people don't like levies for operating, because then how do we keep operating when it ends without another levy? So I think that makes people uncomfortable. And if we could identify a foundation, or I like the sugary tax, the parks are healthy, so does aren't, I think it would make it more easily passed if you could really, we could really emphasize it was just this time. Of course, we often change our minds, but I didn't say that.
Do we have folks needing a second round? Greg and Alan. Okay, Alan first and then Greg.
Oh, I have two questions. Now, there are. Oh, I don't recall why this was so, because it was a long time ago, but we had some police officers that we were funding in schools, and the way that we funded them became problematic, and we had to change the way that we did that. But I don't, I don't want to run into that same problem.
What do you mean, the same problem in?
In, in the funding for the police officers in the levy portion of this, two dedicated police officers.
We can get you some more information about the school resource officers that are currently being funded within the school districts.
Okay. This is the problem with the funding, so maybe you can get back to us on that.
Yeah, we'll be happy to.
I didn't quite understand, maybe you can go back a couple of slides to the slide that is potential bond scenarios and leveraged funds. That one. Didn't quite understand that slide. What does leveraged funding mean?
Okay, so the leveraged funding column refers to dollars, either system development charge dollars or partner funds, and it's an estimate, but that is our estimate of the dollars that we could contribute and add on to the bond funding. I also guess I didn't explain that the reason why we have a range of numbers under the matching funds is, one is under a $31 million bond scenario and one is under a $42 million bond scenario.
10 is under 31.
Correct. Correct. And then therefore, that's why there's a range at the bottom of the slide as well. We were talking about two different bond scenarios.
It would be helpful if, I mean, when you come back on the 24th, where you can explain now, what is those leveraged funds for each of those different things?
Sure.
Where's, what's the sources?
You bet.
If you'd like, Sue can answer Alan's question now around the school resource officers of the schools.
I think what you may be referring to, Alan, is we had a levy for youth and school programs a while back, and we were funding some school programs through that levy, and there was a legal challenge to the way we were doing that that had to do with Measure 5 and categorization of levies and urban renewal. And so we wound up not being able to, to continue to do that portion of the funding. This is not, this would not have any, this didn't have to do with police officers. It had to do with the relationship between us and schools and, and Measure 5 categorization of property tax levies.
Okay. It's nice having institutional memory.
Yes. Okay, Greg, and then Mike.
Thanks, Mayor. More back to the point I was trying to make earlier, but not very well, is that if we don't make these investments now in the window of opportunity that we have, the price tag is going to get higher later. We are not, you know, and people are going to look at us and have a really major sticker shock if that goes, if that happens. If we don't go in May of 18 with a bond and levy or some form of investment in our park system, we will be remiss in the things that this community needs desperately, and we need to invest in that. I know that the schools are going to go for a bond probably in, I think it's November. LCC is going to need to do another bond, and, you know, as been mentioned, the county will probably be looking at some form of bond as well, which says something about the condition of all of our facilities in this community. We have spent years and years and years of punting, of saying, "We'll take care of it later. You know, we can patch it over now. We can do this, and we can do that to make it work." And guess what? Now's come time to pay the price. And I know people don't want to hear that, but if you want safe parks, you want clean parks, you want, you know, new community centers and facilities, this is the time where we have to step up. And I think that it's incumbent upon us as a council for us to be unified in making that case to the voters. This is what we need, and otherwise, we are not going to be giving the kind of service that we need to the community at large that's here and not be competitive with other communities surrounding us that are taking dollars away from this community. I'm tired of driving to Newburgh for soft... I'm tired of driving to Newburgh for softball or Portland for basketball. And a whole lot of people around here are driving up and down the road for soccer and other things. We have got to invest in the infrastructure that we have and we have to grow this infrastructure.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't disagree with my friend. I don't disagree with quite a lot of what's said about the importance of the quality of parks. I don't disagree. I don't disagree that that's highly valued by the members of our community. I do disagree with the 62% number that think council's on the right track, otherwise the auditor discussion would probably be different, but that's a whole other thing. The piece I want to do is make sure we're connecting the dots. When we talk about increased levies and bonds, and the reason I think we should connect the dots is because I believe we should spend more time talking about other alternatives. And I don't mean a sugary beverage tax, I mean endowment, I mean other alternatives. We did do that with the subcommittee and I appreciate it that time and that work. But everything about a levy and bond goes towards property taxes or come from property taxes. So if we're going to increase property taxes a little bit at a time and in some cases maybe even a lot at a time. In our community, we rent, people here rent, more than 50% of the people who live in our community rent. And in a lot, if not most of the communities, it's closer to 30%. More people rent here than other places. And as a result of us increasing property taxes, rents go up. There's a one to one correlation. We're talking about this all the time, that we have a, we have a housing emergency. We have an affordable housing emergency. We've said that around this table a bunch of times, yet right now what we're talking about is making housing more expensive. That's what this conversation is about. And when we talk about SDCs, although we don't know the amount yet for parks going up and potentially transportation SDCs doubling, and intentionally constricting the land supply so that the price of it is going up, we're making policy choices and taxing choices, all of which are exacerbating the affordable housing problem. And, and I would just urge my colleagues, we need to be looking for more creative solutions than we are here. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I want to just make one comment really following up on that. I really appreciated your comment Carolyn about the triple bottom line and think that it's very clear that our investment, our investment, to echo Greg's comments, our economic investment does pay out over time for us, that speaking of affordable housing and low-income renters, park space and, and public services, public spaces to recreate and are even more important to renters than it is to homeowners who have backyards. And so it's critically important. And this relates to our climate change and our climate recovery goals in terms of how we maintain our open space and how we reduce the number of car trips up to Portland to go to sporting events. So, you know, I think kind of remembering that we do have that triple bottom line lens and that this is an important part of that. So I really appreciate all of the work you do. Alan, Emily, oh, Emily, did I, yes, a second round for Emily and for Claire. Okay, go for it, Emily.
I agree with Mike that I would like to see other scenarios than a property tax. And I agree that it's increasing rents, property owners that own rentals pass that on, property owners that don't have to suck it up and they're tired of it. So I think it does put a negative on putting out a levy and a bond because property owners get tired of keep being asked to fund, to fund, to fund. And, you know, we don't have a sales tax, which I don't like, but we don't have other ways. And I think it's very frustrating for a lot of people to pay their property taxes and it's never enough. It's never enough, you know? I'm not the budget expert, but I, I hear people of course saying, why not more for this, why not more for that? But I, I would like to, to know, I know you gave us a scenario, I think the fee was the best other bet, but I just want to be cautious, especially with school bond and an LCC bond and we just had a road bond, that property owners can get pretty cranky. I'm not really sure what they can do about it except vote it down and then where are we? Thank you.
Claire?
Yeah, thank you. So just to respond to some of what was said, you know, if someone can show some data that there is an actual nexus between a passage of a five-year local option levy and an increased housing cost burden, I'd be interested in seeing that actual data. I agree that at least having the outlines of a plan for sustainable funding going forward before we put anything on the ballot to reassure voters that this levy is not something that we're going to be doing forever, I think that's a really good and important idea. I also support the idea of the Parks Foundation and moving towards that. And as I mentioned earlier, I, I support looking further into both the transient room tax and how we're allocating our local marijuana tax because those are things we have some real local control over. I know the state dictates somewhat how we can use the transient room tax, but a sugary beverage tax can seem appealing, but it would likely bring the bigfoot of the soda industry down on us hard, and yes, I use that reference deliberately. And, and would really put us in a position of having to defend something that we want locally, whereas I think some of the current taxes that we have, the room tax and the MJ tax are things that we've already have support in the industries there for that work. They might not like us raising the transient room tax, but we, we have that ability. So I did want to ask the city manager, in terms of our local marijuana tax allocation and the decision we made around that, I'm assuming we have the option to revisit that allocation as a council and come to a different decision from when we first passed it. Is that true or not?
Yes, because the, with the council, you can choose to use any of those marijuana taxes as you, as you want. They're just general fund dollars that come in. And so far the council policy intent has been to either spend them on community court, parks, security, or human services related items. So that's what your current direction is, but you can change that at any time.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other, Alan?
Yeah, I also disagree with what Mike said, that a very modest increase in property tax hurts affordable housing. If that were true, then a reduction in property tax would then increase affordable housing. And I don't think that that's true at all. And that's why we have this whole missing middle housing crisis that we have. That's the crisis, is that we don't have that. We have lots of multifamily housing, we have lots of high-income housing, and the stuff in the middle about middle missing housing is really what the problem is. We haven't had incentives that targeted that and for the last 20 years we haven't built it. And that's part of the problem with, with the type of housing supply that we have. And we need to redirect our efforts to look at that. And that's what the whole missing middle housing effort is about. We're going to have a workshop coming in February followed by a, a work session at the council. It's much more complex than that. You know, Lance, at one point, you know, we're talking about our, we, we just did this whole analysis and said we have a 20-year land supply for residential property and don't need to increase that. And at the same time, the developer's saying, there's absolutely no land to build anywhere, anyplace, so it's all going up. And so those two things are in conflict. One of them can't be true. Also, on a bigger picture, our competitive advantage as a community isn't related to just about housing. It's related to our quality of life, our environment, what kind of parks we have, what kind of schools we have, what are the opportunities here? So there are a whole bunch of factors that go into how we thrive as a community and whether or not we prosper. And, and it is a problem that we, that we need to address about the, the cost of housing and, and especially on that lower end of the scale. If you go try to buy a $200,000, $300,000 home and, and even below that, it's very, very difficult to do because there just isn't a lot of it. And, and, and then stuff that, housing for people that are below that threshold of buying a house is, and that are mostly be renting is very difficult to find in our community. And that's one of the big problems that we have to address.
Thank you. Okay, and you have more to share?
I do. I will take just a couple of minutes to kind of orient you to this spreadsheet and then give you time to digest it on your own. But, and, and for those in the audience, the categories of projects are the same that are on the screen. But generally speaking, if you're looking at the spreadsheet, we have the, first column is all about the projects themselves and the categories. And then the first green column that you see is the total project cost. So that's the entire capital investment. And then the three columns that follow that, bond funds, SDC, leveraged, and partner, break down that total capital investment into the different funding type. The next, one, two, three, four, five, six or seven columns in blue there, break down the investment by planning district. And these are the same planning districts that we've been using in, in the Parks and Rec system planning effort and, and identify the investment in each one of those. And then the final column in orange represents the amount of O&M funding that each of these categories would need in addition to our existing need. And then if you go down to the bottom of the list, we actually have both bond scenarios on this one sheet. The first total of the $31 million bond scenario you see highlighted in blue there. And then the next list down below, it only has one additional project on it, but the $42 million bond totals are, start with that orange column. And the only difference between the 31 and the 42 million bond scenario is the renovation of Sheldon Community Center and Pool. So, and then finally, just to orient you on the O&M funding, those orange boxes over on the right-hand side, the first total represents the additional cost of the new projects. And then we add to that the 2.4 million existing need to get the total O&M required for each package. Any questions about that?
I assume you have an even bigger spreadsheet that says what projects are in each of these parks and what they cost?
We do have some estimates broken down by each individual project. They're, they're a little rough, but we, we have them. So we have them rolled up into the categories at this point in time.
I think that would be really useful information to have, to speak to voters as to what exactly is going on in the different parks. Are you getting new bathrooms, are the bathrooms open? Do you have benches? Do you have a better field? I think that will bring it home to a lot of people as to whether or not they want to vote for it because they're going to want to know how it affects them directly.
Sure, so more description.
Yeah, and if, you know, you look down all this and your park's not on there, should you just assume nothing's getting better there? You know, I assume operations and maintenance somewhat will go everywhere, but that's not shown on this list. And the more I can bring it back to, you know, what your household is going to get from your property tax increase, whether it's direct or rental, will really help people decide. I, I don't know when we get to see that, but it'll be interesting.
We do come back to you on the 24th. I can bring you more information there.
Claire?
Thank you. So this spreadsheet is looking at how we might spend the capital projects funding, is that correct?
That's correct.
Would it be possible, or is there a possi, is, would it be possible to get a similar breakdown for the O&M? Where we talked about two dedicated police officers, which parks would they be dedicated to, two parks ambassadors, where would they be put? Which restrooms do we think might get opened? Those kinds of things?
Sure, we can provide that. I mean, in general, the O&M is going to be spread throughout the system and go to the areas of the greatest need. So for instance, through our Park Watch Committee, we determine where our priority hotspots are and working with EPD, and that's where we dispatch our park ambassadors and, as well as those officers if we have them. We know that that's typically down closer to the downtown urban core and our riverfront parks, but if we need them further out in the system, they would certainly go in that direction as, as well as just the overall custodial services that we would be providing to. So you'd see it spread out across the system.
Okay, so and I understand it's expected to be responsive, as you say, to where the greatest needs have been historically or in the future where they end up showing up on hotspot maps. So if we can, I understand it's a little bit of a guesstimating and it's fluid, but as much, you know, bookends as we can put around that for the 24th, that would be very helpful.
Any other questions or comments? Alan?
Yeah, I, I agree with what Emily said. Filling in this, this chart would be very helpful. But I'd also think that we would want to take a page out of the three successful road bonds. The three things that I think made that successful were it had a citizen advisory committee, which you're doing, that it had a, an audit, which I think we're going to do. And the third one was that the benefits be distributed amongst the city. That's a little bit more tough here. What we did with the road bond, we drew a map and said, this is how we're doing all the roads and this is exactly what we're going to do. And they were spread out amongst the city. So everybody got something out of this and benefits. And in fact, we did that by ward. And I would think that that would be very helpful in this case, that if we not only did this by your planning districts, but also by ward that showed that this is going to be distributed around the city and that everybody benefits. Right now, it's really difficult to tell if you benefit. And to be as specific as possible, I think will benefit us. It doesn't need to be equal because the parks are where the parks are. And in fact, my expectation is there's going to be more money spent north of the river than south of the river. So, and I think that's fine. I think people realize that. But everybody needs to get some benefit and they need to be shown that's positive, that they're really seeing something out of this. And that'll be part of why people say, okay, I'll cover up five more bucks to go from three to $8 to do the levy and the capital.
We can bring that back to you on the 24th as well.
So I have a question and maybe Mike, maybe I'm wrong about this and you can tell me I'm wrong if I am, but my understanding from some meetings was that Striker Field was going to be developed separate from this process because of some other concern, timeline concerns? Is that not correct? Or maybe you're not aware of that?
The, I, what I know is that the main reason why we haven't been able to develop Striker Field yet is because we don't have the O&M funding to maintain it.
Right.
And so through operating levy, we would then have the funds that would allow us to maintain it. It is identified specifically on this list under new park development.
So this is, so I, maybe part of the problem is that there's no numbers. But is this, so this line item is for maintenance funds?
Well, those would be for SDC funds. So they would be, that would be the capital side.
Right.
But then there would also be accompanying O&M funds.
Okay.
I think Sarah can probably weigh in a little bit on the conversation too.
Oh, I see, I see, okay. Thank you for.
We talked about that before we put it on the list because I'm still working with the group to figure out what is the best approach for that. I didn't want it not to show up here because I thought if it wasn't on this list, that would be a bigger alarm.
Right.
Until we identify it and we've gone through all the steps and we've said, yes, we're doing that, I think I still want it to, to show here as something that's a priority to us.
So the other things that we talked about are still on the table?
Yep.
Mike, did you want to say something?
I was going to ask Sarah to come up and address. Awesome.
There we go.
I, I would say however, that the timing is interesting to me. I mentioned that during previous conversations, which by the way, Sarah's done a great job of working with the, with the neighbors, neighborhood association and with several interested parties in that area and that park development, as well as our, our parks staff, but met with and assured them of this. And, and I recall the conversation assured that those answers will be forthcoming before anything like this would be on a ballot. Isn't that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments in the last two minutes? I think we are done and thank you very much for really excellent, excellent report, very helpful. very helpful, and we look forward to seeing you in a few weeks. We're done.